Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're here tonight for the public session on the Rumke possible consent decree. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing tonight?
Mr. Eders? Mr. Ritter?
Aye.
Mr. Ritter?
Aye.
Is that Mr. Barbier?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Larry Barbier. I'm the law director for Corrine Township. I also participated in the trial of the case that Rumke filed against Corrine Township. Also here tonight is Catherine Cunningham, who was the lead counsel on that case. This is actually the second time we've had a public hearing to discuss... Can people hear me? Can everybody hear? Okay. This is actually the second time that we've had a public hearing with respect to a possible settlement. The first time was in July of 2014. There was a public hearing, and after that public hearing, the settlement was not approved. The main reason the settlement was not approved at that time was because there was a concern about the underground reaction at the landfill, and also because of a concern that there was no consumer price index in the settlement agreement. This is the second time where there's a new proposed settlement here tonight for the trustees to consider and for you all to comment on. And this does, in fact, have a consumer price index part to it. And at the trial of this action, the judge has effectively dealt with the issue regarding the underground reaction. I'd like to take a minute just to explain to you what this process is. This is a process that's established by the Ohio Revice Code. It's Section 505.07. And that's pursuant to that code. If there's going to be a settlement of a zoning case, there's a public hearing where the public gets a chance to express their views on the settlement. And then, following that hearing, the trustees vote as to whether to approve the settlement or not. I'll give you a little bit of background. Some of you know this, some of you may not. So I'm going to give you a little background about how we got to where we are today. In March 2006, Rumke applied for a zoning certificate... for a zoning change, actually, to change zoning east of the landfill to solid waste so they could expand their landfill to the east. It was zoned industrial and residential in that area. The Corrine Township trustees, of which Jeff Ritter was a member at the time, denied that request for a zone change. That led to Rumke then suing Corrine Township. And they sued Corrine Township really for two main reasons. And we'll keep it fairly simple for the purposes of this hearing, but they were... The claim by Rumke was that the zoning, as it was, industrial and residential east of the landfill, did not serve a legitimate governmental interest, and it deprived Rumke of all economically viable uses of the property. The other issue that was raised in the original complaint was Rumke took the position that they were a public utility, and as a result, Corrine Township had no ability whatsoever to zone their property or to in any way restrict their use of the property. Initially, the judge granted summary judgment in favor... in 2009, in favor of Rumke on the public utility issue. And in December of 2010, the Court of Appeals also affirmed that finding, that Rumke was a public utility. So at that place in the proceedings, Corrine Township was in a position where they would have absolutely no regulatory control whatsoever over Rumke. The case was appealed to the Ohio Supreme Court by Corrine Township. And after the appeal, eventually, the Ohio Supreme Court reversed, and the case came back down to the trial court to decide if the zoning to the east of the landfill was constitutional. So there were several parts to the claim, and they were what's called bifurcated. They were separated out. The first issue was, was the zoning constitutional, and was there a taking? And if, in fact, the judge had ruled there was a taking, then the next phase of the case would have been to determine the amount of money Rumke was entitled to as a result of Corrine Township's taking of their property. The trial... This case went to a trial. And, you know, there... We tried in July of 2014 to reach a settlement agreement. No settlement agreement was reached. Many depositions were taken. Much work was done on the case. And we hired experts. Rumke hired experts. We hired an expert in landfills, an expert who could testify about the underground reaction, an expert who could testify about other landfills throughout the country and throughout the world, and issues that they may have. And we hired... We had hired a couple of land planners to testify about zoning issues and about Corrine Township's right to zone the property and things of that nature. And we also hired appraisers who could testify that, no, there were still economically viable uses of the property. On the other hand, Rumke hired experts to testify directly contrary to the experts that we retained. The case went to trial on July 20th of 2015. And the case was tried before Judge Hildebrandt, who's a very experienced and respected judge. He'd been on the Court of Appeals for many years. And it was tried before him, beginning on July 20th. The trial lasted for more than two weeks. Twenty-four witnesses were called to testify. And we called all the experts that we told you about, and more people, obviously, and we called people Corrine did, to testify about the effects of the landfill on the community, how the people felt about the landfill, and the other issues that we indicated that we had hired the experts to testify about. Rumke put on their witnesses, and the judge listened to it all. And then gave us a chance after the trial was over. He gave us a chance to file our briefs. And we filed a 50-page or so brief on behalf of Corrine Township to try to prove to the court that the zoning was constitutional. And of course, Rumke's attorneys filed a lengthy brief indicating to the judge, to try to prove to the judge, that the zoning was not constitutional. On October 19th, 2015, Judge Hildebrandt issued his decision. And I'm going to read some of this decision to you, because I think it's important that you understand what the judge decided. We had our day in court. We presented the case as well as we could. Catherine and I, you know, both presented. We both handled witnesses. All our experts testified, as we had hoped they would. Rumke's experts testified, I'm sure as they hoped they would. And the judge listened very carefully to all the evidence, and the judge issued his decision. And I'm not going to read you the entire decision, but I'm going to read to you some of the more important findings that he made in his decision. "The zoning of the roughly 350 acres that are the subject matter of this action is unconstitutional beyond fair debate." Now, "beyond fair debate" means pretty much what they do in a criminal trial is beyond a reasonable doubt. So the judge is telling us that beyond a reasonable doubt, the zoning to the east of the landfill was unconstitutional. "It denies plainness of all economically viable use of the land, and the zoning designation does not substantially advance a legitimate governmental interest." He goes on to say, "To the extent that the property is zoned for light industrial use, the cost to make the property usable for light industrial use is too onerous. In order to prepare the property for light industrial use, sanitary sewers must be installed, and the cost of installing sanitary sewers is prohibitive. Further, the steep and uneven topography of the property makes it difficult to put the property to light industrial use. Additionally, there is poor access to the property. Moreover, the evidence shows there are a lot of streams on the property, and that stream mitigation costs are also prohibitive." And this was simply a function of where the property is. Corrine Township is really not a place where a lot of industrial businesses have been moving to recently. They mostly are moving into the 75 corridor, combined with the topography, the streams, et cetera. And the judge found that industrial was just not a reasonable use for the property to the east of the landfill, and as a result, that was unconstitutional. Then he said, "To the extent the property is zoned residential, the testimony establishes that it is too expensive to develop the property for residential use due to topographical, infrastructure, regulatory, environmental, market, and geographical factors, and that once developed, there is no demand for residential development on the property." The court further finds that the current zoning does not substantially advance a legitimate government interest. To the contrary, the evidence established that it is better to expand an existing landfill than to create a new one. Expanding an existing landfill limits the number of landfill sites and allows the larger landfill to hold more waste in a smaller area. Now, that sentence is pretty critical to one of the reasons that we are proposing this settlement tonight. One of the things that can be accomplished through this settlement is that it will give the township trustees in the future the ability to stop any expansion of the landfill. This sentence from the judge put that in doubt. So through this settlement, if it is approved, the trustees will then have the power to stop any further expansions of the landfill. The next sentence is what I talked about earlier with respect to the underground reaction. "The court agrees that the Ohio EPA is responsible for technical operations of the landfill and nuisance concerns. The Ohio EPA is solely concerned with environmental protection and the protection of human health from pollution and improper waste treatment and/or disposal." So in other words, what the court is finding then is, okay, Corrine Township, you have the right to zone, but if we're going to talk about the underground reaction and its negative effects, that's not Corrine Township. That's not your bailiwick. That's the bailiwick of the EPA. So the court's finding there is, is that while Corrine Township made every effort to present to the court through expert testimony issues relating to the underground reaction and other issues, we put on witnesses and all kinds of evidence about odors and about the underground reaction and about other issues relating to problems that the landfill causes in our community, the court says, well, that's all well and good, but that's up to the EPA, and that's not up to you, Corrine Township. The court went on to say, "The court further finds that a sanitary landfill is a reasonable and proper use of the property. The court further finds that the proposed light industrial use, the House plaintiff's office, is reasonable." And that's one small part of the industrial use, and that is to have offices for Rumke. And the court found that was reasonable. The court went on to say that the township has to, within 45 days of his order, zone the property for solid waste district. Okay? At that point, we had put on all the evidence we could. We have fought Rumke for seven and a half years, and we've reached a point where we had our day in court. We presented the best case we could to the judge, and the judge has ruled in favor of Rumke. So where does that leave us now? Well, we filed a notice of appeal. But I'll give you some statistics. I can't... I don't really want to talk to you about, you know, the legal issues and what will happen on appeal and things of that nature, but I can talk to you about statistics. And although the first appellate district doesn't keep records of this, we've got very reliable estimates that about 10 percent, maybe 10 to 15 percent, of the cases that are appealed from the trial court are reversed in the Court of Appeals. You know from our previous discussion that when this case first was appealed on the regulatory issue, on the public utility issue, that the Court of Appeals affirmed the trial court's decision against Corrine Township. If we were lucky to get that case into the Ohio Supreme Court, in fact, the Ohio Supreme Court initially denied our motion to get it into the Supreme Court. But on reconsideration, they voted four to three in favor of Corrine Township and allowed the case to be heard by the Ohio Supreme Court. Last year, though, the Ohio Supreme Court only accepted 5 percent of the cases that people moved to get into the Supreme Court. The year before that, they only accepted 3.8 percent of the cases. So right now, we're in a situation where we have appealed, and Rumke has filed a cross appeal. And Rumke filed a cross appeal because the judge ruled that the mandamus action that Rumke had filed, which was for the taking, for the damages, that that was moot in light of his decision on the zoning issues. So we have our appeal in the Court of Appeals. We have Rumke's appeal in the Court of Appeals, and that's where we stand. In the meantime, since we have appealed, there have been discussions between the township and Rumke regarding a possible settlement. The terms of the possible settlement have been all reduced to writing, and they're in the consent decree that has been available for inspection. I think it's on the website, and I know it's been in the fiscal office since December 1st. I'm not going to go over all of the terms of the consent decree. Jim Rowan, after I finish, is going to talk more about the consent decree, and especially about the monetary considerations. But I will tell you that in light of the circumstances, in light of where we are here today, in light of the judge's ruling, in light of work of all the work that has been done in this case, it is my opinion that this is a very, very favorable settlement to Corrine Township, and I'm recommending to the trustees that they approve it. As I already indicated, it's very positive, in my opinion, that the consent decree gives for future trustees a right to decide whether or not Rumke can expand their landfill, and it's solely up to those trustees to make that decision. And Rumke is going to be paying very, very substantial money to Corrine Township as part of the settlement. And with that, I'm going to let Jim Rowan come up and talk a little bit more about the financial considerations of the settlement. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I'd like to just point out what the proposed expansion looks like on the map. This particular map can also be found on the website and as part of consent decree with regards to the expansion, but I at least wanted to give you a view of what that expansion would look like. The major settlement provisions that are part of this consent decree will call for the rezoning of approximately 434 acres. It is a final expansion unless approved by the Board of Trustees. So in the future, if another expansion request comes in, it will be solely up to the Board of Trustees at that time to decide whether there would be another expansion. From 2016 through 2021, the consent decree will provide a flat payment of $1,250,000 to the township if 1 million tons of garbage or waste is deposited in the landfill. On average, for the past three years, there's been about 1.6 million tons go into landfill. So we feel pretty good about that estimate being over 1 million tons would generate 1.25 million between now, 2016 and 2021. Beginning in 2022, that flat fee drops to 1.1 million. Now, some may ask, well, what's the difference between 1 million, 250, and 1 million, 1? We asked for additional consideration for the next six years, because this is the time the township is going through a debt retirement phase, where all township debt will be retired in 2021. So this extra $150,000 a year helps us bridge that gap until the debt's retired. So starting in 2022 and beyond, the township would yield $1 million, or 1.1 million in flat revenue every year for 1 million more tons deposited. In addition, upon the vacating of Hughes Road, there would be an additional 25 cents a ton provided to the township, which will equate to approximately 400,000 a year on that 1.6 million estimate. So when you consider the 1.1 million in 2022 and the 400,000, that will provide 1.5 million dollars more to the township in new revenue. In addition to that, and one of the things that came up at the last consent decree was the fact that there was no CPI built in to the payment. We have been able to reach agreement that upon the expansion, once the first amount of garbage goes into the expanded landfill, there will be a CPI tied to all the tonnage rates, which would be the statutory state rate, the 20-cent consent decree rate that's currently in effect, and this additional 25 cent rate, up to a maximum of 3 percent. The flat fee is not subject to a CPI. This consent decree also has the restricted hours for blasting, and it also allows Corrine Township to provide a liaison to work with Rumke and to be able to provide communications back to the community. The previous consent decree, as presented in 2014, over a 50-year life, had an additional revenue component of approximately $95 million, if you look at that over a 50-year life. Considering where we are today with a projected 2 percent CPI, recognizing that we have a 3 percent cap, this deal would actually produce just over $98 million over that same 50-year life. So considering that we were not successful in the lawsuit, this is a pretty fair settlement proposal that's being considered tonight by the board. I'd also like to point out that there was a scientific survey that was hosted by Northern Kentucky University of Township residents, and we asked the question prior to the trial court's decision, would you be in favor of settling the ongoing litigation and allow Rumke to expand? And prior to the decision of this court, 48 percent of those surveyed said yes, settle. 23 percent was undecided, and 29 percent said no. And that was prior to the most recent decision. So at this point in time, we're going to open it up for public comment. I have the sign-in sheets here for those that have signed in. Mr. Birkenhour is going to make sure nobody else dropped the form in. Your comments are limited to three minutes. I would ask that you be respectful. The board will not answer any questions during that presentation, but they will have comments to do after the public hearing is closed. Anything else, Mr. Birkenhour?
My name is Terry Cook. I'd like to thank Mr. Barbier and the trustees for their hard work on behalf of concerned You said the judge thought expanding the landfill was a good idea. I don't think if he lived in my neighborhood, he would think that. He thinks that because he lives in a hoity-toity area. You put up on the screen where a lot of citizens in Corrine Township either were undecided or they thought it was okay. Those are all people living south of the expressway. I live north side. I've been to Township since '78. My wife and I own multiple rental properties. Thousands of people north of 275 don't like this. We just don't like it. It's gotten big. When I first moved here, there was businesses along Springdale. I bought a little tree from a guy who had a nursery up there. No longer. You can't drive down 27 with your windows down. I mean, it just gags you. Step out my front yard, it's gags you most days. My son lives a mile away. It gags him. It's affecting our quality of life for all the citizens, whether they responded to a survey or not. I'm speaking not just for me. I mean, there's lots of other people that think like I do. At this stage, I realize that we're in a spot. If I had influence, you know, I'd encourage you to go further, do everything we can to stop it. Send them someplace else, in my opinion. This is all about making money for the Rumke family. It's a bunch of millionaires. Fighting against little guys like me who are represented by you guys. So again, I thank you for your efforts on my behalf and others like me. Thank you.
Thanks for having this public hearing. And as I stated at trustee's meeting a few weeks ago, I've read the settlement consent decree. I think this settlement is the best deal for the Corrine Township residents. I also believe that the continued litigation against Rumke is a waste of the taxpayers' resources. Rumke has been in the Corrine Township as a landfill for over 70 years. From a professional perspective, Rumke landfill is well-run as compared to the other national landfills. And I can understand some people don't like living next to a dump, but most people who complain about the landfill have moved near the landfill since it was started, and now suddenly have a NIMBY syndrome. And I've dealt with that professionally, both from landfills, sewer treatment plants, et cetera. And unfortunately, garbage and sewage has got to go somewhere. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Dr. Sky Shelby. I've had a business on Corrine Avenue for the last 26 years. I came here last time, last meeting, in support of Rumke. As a businessperson, in my 26 years, I've had two situations where a situation has arisen that I didn't understand. One was a streetcar. I go to lunch once a month with the former mayor. I'm a Republican. He's a Democrat. Doesn't matter. I don't get the streetcar. Okay? The other thing I don't get is this whole Rumke thing, lawsuit with the township, the last nine years. Rumke... No one wins a lawsuit. There's always two losers. The question is, is how you can compromise? But I never understood the township, if they won the lawsuit, they lost because they lost the tax base. And I understand your situation totally. I get it. Last time I was here, I had seven patients here that were against Rumke. They're still patients today, too, by the way. I encourage you to do a settlement. Rumke, more than any other business besides being the top five employer, good tax base, they're one of the biggest cheerleaders of this township. They get... They buy our football fields. They buy our playgrounds. They support every tens of thousands of dollars to the taste of Cincinnati. And to me, that matters, because I'm a businessman. And the last time I was here, I was hoping we would come up with some type of compromise, and I'm hoping this time, just for, as a business sake, that you approve it. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to speak here tonight. My name is Jennifer Schnee, and I have been... I've either resided or worked in Corrine Township for over 51 years now. And I'm here to say that I believe we should settle with Rumke. I'm in favor of the settlement. I think it's time to quit throwing away time and money and just finalize this, just move forward with them. So I am asking that you do settle with Rumke. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone on your side and on Rumke's side for their time. I know a lot of hard work's been put into this. I am in favor of a settlement. I think it's the best thing to do. Personally, I would be very curious to know how many people moved here after 1955. Last night, I was Googling... Last night, I was Googling, and I found something very interesting. I always knew that the landfill started out as collecting food for the pigs in 1930. What I didn't know was that in 1955, a new law was passed that changed the course of the family business. The new law required food waste to be cooked before it could be fed to the livestock. Since local people were used to the weekly Rumke collection, Rumke sold the animals and concentrated on collection of the disposal of the trash. He sold his animals. He continued to help us as a utility, as homeownerspeople were used to him taking his garbage. Had he not had the guts to do this back then, our yards would be backed up to who knows what. So I think that Rumke's should be, this should be accepted. I hope you all will do it. Enough money has been spent, and I think that we need him. And my personal opinion is, anyone that moved in after, I moved in 1955, my folks did, and anyone else that moved in that's not happy, since this has been settled, you can move to Fairfield, Westchester, and be assured for 50 years that they're not going to be forced to shut down, and they're going to be in your backyard. And whatever you object to now, whether you shut them down tomorrow, it is still going to be here. So my thing is, if you don't like it, move. You're safe for 50 years. So I hope you will consider doing this and keep everyone here safe. I'm personally for it, and I thank you.
I'm a Corrine resident for 16 years, and this issue has been going on for most of that time, and it's a very emotional issue, and I can see both people's, both sides of the story. But now, the last couple of years, it is more of a financial issue. And I urge that you approve the settlement, to put the township in a much better financial situation. Thank you.
Hi, Jim. I moved here from Wisconsin in 1997, and I have no ties whatsoever with Rumke, and I also have no ties with the township. I have a four-year degree in political science from the University of Wisconsin, which is a national leader in recycling and environmental issues. I was very impressed when I came to Corrine Township and saw what kind of an organization Rumke had. It's a family-run business. They've been here for years, generations. This is the kind of landfill that I was impressed with. Every time I see a park, it's, you know, Rumke this, Rumke that. They've been really active in the community. In Wisconsin, we have mandatory recycling, where if the garbage people come by and they see recyclables in your garbage, they put this little sticker on your garbage can, and it says, you know, "We didn't pick up your garbage because we saw recyclables." Ohio is way behind, way behind Wisconsin in recycling. And Rumke, I saw, is the future. Three years ago, Rumke opened up a $26 million recycling facility in St. Bernard. They've spent $50 million on recycling up in Columbus. You know, they're not just here any longer. They are our future. And yes, I know that there's smell coming from that landfill. For the last 18 years, I've lived less than a mile from that landfill. Sometimes I smell the smell. It's not a big deal. I know that it sounds like they're saying, you know, check is in the mail, but they are working on that smell. It is a specific inversion inside this area. I think eventually, they're going to come up with a solution. Rich McVeigh, in two guest columns in Northwest Press, talks about this fire, and there is no fire. The highest temperature recorded in that landfill is 200 degrees. You know, some of the rhetoric that's been going on in this issue has been bad. I really think that as a community, we've got to get behind Rumke. We've got to do the settlement. Rumke is our future. Recycling is our future. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Reinhardt, members of the board? That concludes everybody that signed in this evening.
With that, I guess we will have moved to close the public hearings. Is there a motion? Aye. And now we have our thoughts on it. I'll start with...
Okay, if some of you remember, I have abstained on a prior vote with Rumke because of a new position that I have with a law firm. And unfortunately, I'm going to do that tonight again on advice of counsel. But I will tell you, and I wanted to speak briefly on this issue because frankly, it's been at the center of everything I've done as a township trustee to this point. I wanted to first commend our attorneys for working so hard on this case. I mean, they basically gave away their, most of their year to work on this case. But I also wanted to commend our administration and your current Board of Trustees. I think a lot of times what gets lost in the political process is that the decision-makers are one of us. Jeff, Mindy, they live in Corrine Township just like everybody else. Mindy lives up next to the landfill. Jeff and I live a little bit farther away, but we still feel its effects. So to say that this is an issue that they took seriously and took to heart, that every decision is an understatement, and I commend them for that throughout this process, and I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that tonight. Every step of the way, I know for a fact, and we worked countless hours on this issue. I mean, it's probably one of the most important things that Corrine will face in my lifetime and most of yours. But a lot of stuff happened behind the scenes and countless hours working on strategy and settlement, et cetera, and I commend the board for that. At every step, they did what they thought was right for themselves, for the community, and for their families and your families. So when this happens and this vote happens tonight, regardless of what happens, don't forget that perspective. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Since obviously Jeff and I will be voting on this tonight, I think it's fair for us to kind of tell you where our thought process is. This is obviously, in the four years I've been a trustee, been the largest issue we've dealt with. It's monopolized a ton of our time as far as our meetings, our executive sessions, all of those sort, emails, phone calls, legal expenses. So I mean, this has obviously been a huge, I don't want to say burden, that's not exactly the right word, but it's obviously been a huge time consumer as far as our job as a trustee goes. So this has not been made a lightly decision at all. So at this point, I feel like we're not debating whether the landfill should be here or not, and I feel like that's how some of the comments go sometimes. So even if Rumke shut their doors tomorrow, as, I forget who said it now, but one of the comments was, "It's still going to be here. It's still a landfill. You still can't build on it. You still can't do anything with it. It's still there, and the actual landfill itself still has at least a 15-year capacity on it." So even if this didn't go through, it's not going to close tomorrow. It's not going to go away tomorrow, and we're not debating trying to stop a landfill from coming to Corrine Township. It's here. With what the court has done over the last few months, I think the best thing we can do is turn a bad decision from the court into a positive for Corrine. And I think at this point, this is the moral thing to do, and it is the most fiscally responsible thing to do for this township. We are not here to bankrupt this township. We are here to take care of it in the best way we see fit. And at this point, I think that a settlement with Rumke is the best course of action at this time for this township. Thank you.
I want to start by thanking everybody who showed up tonight, whether you spoke or didn't speak. It's important to take part in your local government, so I want to thank you for your time. I originally thought I'd prepare a written statement and read from that at this point in the evening. Ultimately, I decided not to do that and just speak from the heart. It's fair to say, pretty heavily emotionally invested in this case. I'm the only trustee that was around when we originally considered the request back in 2006. I'm the only trustee with, actually, my name on the suit. So suffice it to say that it is an emotional issue for me, but I will tell you that I think most of the residents, the vast majority of them, would expect me to, you know, rule in this matter based on sound judgment, reason, and assess the risk to the township by continuing the litigation further in the appeals process. You know, last summer, we had a similar proposal to settle the case, as you recall, in this room, and ultimately, I decided to vote against that settlement proposal and proceed the trial. And there was, you know, a lot of different considerations. It was probably the most, one of the most difficult decisions of my life, both personally and professionally. I agonized over it for a long time, but ultimately, I decided to reject it because of one major thing. If we were going to have the landfill in our township for another 50 years, then I wanted it to be a Hamilton County judge that made that judgment, and it wouldn't be me. And so we did proceed a trial, and as Larry said earlier, unfortunately, we lost. So we're now confronted with the stark reality of the statistics that Mr. Barbieri cited regarding appeals. The next step in the process would be the First District Court of Appeals. 10 to 15 percent of cases are reversed there. And then, of course, after that, you'd have the Court of Last Resort, the Ohio Supreme Court, and only 4 to 5 percent of cases are even accepted there, and even then, there's no guarantee that they reverse it. So we're facing long odds. And I also said from the beginning of this case, you know, going back to 2006, I've said that the real apocalypse for Corrine Township isn't 50 more years of landfill, it's 50 more years of landfill at 25 cents a ton. 25 cents a ton is the statutory rate in Ohio that a host community gets for having a landfill in your community. If we were to fight this all the way through and lose, we would have 50 more years of landfill at only 25 cents a ton. That's it. And so, you know, that's a major consideration. And I've also learned one thing in 10 years with this case, nine years of litigating it, and it's one stark truth, but I'm just going to give it to you straight. I've learned that outside of Corrine Township, no one cares. No one cares. And, you know, certainly, we've learned that Hamilton County judges don't care, and I would argue the state legislature, except for maybe Bill Blessing and Bill Seitz, they don't care. And I would argue most local officials in the region don't care either. They think it's groovy that the trash from their communities come to Corrine Township. No one cares, except the Board of Trustees in this community. I wouldn't dispute anything that was said, whether it be tonight or previously, about the harmful effects of having a landfill in your community. No one disputes that. No one's here to argue that anymore. It's about mitigating further risk to the township and making sure that we're adequately compensated for what we're going to have to bear for the next 50 years. There continue to be a select few who blame the trustees for just about everything and want us to be in a perpetual war with Rumke, and I just utterly reject that. It's not helpful, it's not productive, and we need to move on. But make no mistake about it, Lee Hildebrand is the person who sentenced this township to 50 more years of landfill, not the Board of Trustees. So I think to reject this settlement in the face of the appeal statistics I cited, not to mention the continual hemorrhaging of more attorney's fees, and then the dramatically underfunded state of our general fund currently, in the face of all those things, I think it'd be reckless, irresponsible, and foolish to reject the settlement. So accordingly, I'm going to make a motion that the board approve the settlement of case A-0703073 upon the terms set forth in the consent decree, which has been available for inspection in the fiscal office, and authorize our counsel to execute the consent decree.
I'll second that, Heather.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.